All right. We are live. So just so everyone knows. My name is Jeremy Martin. I'm planning development director for the town of Camden. And due to the COVID pandemic, we're holding planning board meetings. On over Zoom, the Zoom platform. And we do encourage and our agendas always encourage people to submit questions to us. Ahead of time, we also monitor. The YouTube channel for questions as well. If people have them out in the public that may be watching. We are. There is no formal action being taken today on any agenda item. And Ethan, if you want to maybe just start the meeting. And then I could do an introduction of. John and Norman and their project, and then I'd turn it over to John. And John, if you can't share your screen, I can certainly share mine for you if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I think we there's no reason both of us can't just share on be on this one.
Okay, I was referring to the plans that that you have. So I can do that if you'd like.
Yeah.
Oh, are we going right into this?
Ethan's going to start the meeting and have open it up for non agenda items.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Yep. So welcome to the Camden Planning Board. Meeting of April 1st, 2021. The Jeremy's already explained that this is a Zoom meeting and there are process, there's a process for commenting. Via the YouTube channel or in the Zoom meeting, if you've been invited. So the first item up for discussion or whatever is we're going to open it up to a public comments on any non agenda items.
Yes, I have a non agenda item.
Okay.
I'd like to bring up. I just received the. The agenda. For this week's select board meeting.
Yeah.
On this agenda. Is Camden Police Ordinance. To amend, to add. Part 1G unhoseded short term rental registration ordinance. For the planning board. The select board is now trying to. Turn over property management to the police department. This has been discussed. At previous planning board meetings. Got a little bit of pushback. And we have never discussed it any further. I think this is deceitful. Underhanded. And intentional to bypass the planning board. And I think everybody needs to pay attention to this. And they need to go to that select board meeting and voice their opinions. Does anybody have any idea what this police ordinance is about?
Well, Mark, you weren't you weren't here last week or the last meeting, I think you were in Florida. I did ask Jeremy about it and he gave us an update. I'm sure he's happy to give us another update now. Jeremy, you have the floor.
Sure. Thank you, Mark. And I get where you're coming from on the land use planning side of things. If you look in the police ordinances of the town, that's where lots of different ordinances are. That's a lot sit there and. One would be. Visler's licensing, which is licensing of restaurants. One would be. Lodging licenses, which is licensing of bed and breakfasts, motels, in those kinds of things. And what this is an attempt, this is a similar thing to that. And I when we talked about it. You know, a couple of months ago or a month ago, so ago. It is again, just a licensing ordinance. It is not a planning tool. This is. The town is trying to get a handle on the number of. Short term rentals and how to handle them moving forward. And one way to do that, a lot of communities are doing this is licensing.
What communities are doing this is the first time I've ever heard of anything like this. Who's doing it?
Of requiring licensing or registration of short term rentals?
Yes, by the police department. By the police department.
If you look in that ordinance, and this is a. And I will say this is a whole nother thing. We are in the process of trying to codify our ordinances over the years. The town of Camden has not had a what would be called a code of ordinances. Which compiles and Ethan, as a lawyer probably gets this, which compiles every single. Ordinance, regulation, everything is laid out in a code of ordinances and the town of Camden over the years has not had that. And what they've have have done is put things in, I think even the. I think even the food sovereignty thing that passed a year or so ago. Maybe in the police ordinances or maybe in the miscellaneous ordinances. So we have these, those are the only places where we have. Ordinances or codes that regulate, again, a whole host of things. We are in the process of codifying our code. I know the town manager is going to be trying to move something forward to actually. Codify every ordinance that we have in town in the appropriate way. And this is just the spot, a place where licensing and registration ordinances go in the town ordinances. That is what it is. If you read it, the code officer has. It falls on the code officer to do things or the police chief or their designate. And again, this ordinance is really just a trying to register, get a handle on the number of. Short term rentals that are non owner occupied. And that's what this does. That's all it does. It does not do inspections at the present time. It would just require those that are non owner occupied because of impacts to neighborhoods, et cetera, to register them. And and we'll get a handle on what we're going to hand do moving forward, certainly short term rentals and. You know, one could look at it as a land use issue and a planning issue, no doubt about it. And I would suspect. This issue is not going to go away. And I think it was the intent to try to. Be our the town's first step to try to assess what's really going on with short term rentals. I've had communications with multiple consulting firms that assist towns in managing short term rentals and. We have about 300 plus short term rentals in the town of Camden about what. The numbers I get from them right now is about 80% of those are non owner occupied.
So so what you're telling me, on one hand, you're telling me this is to get a handle. On what's going on, but you're just giving me all the information of what is actually going on. So I don't, you know?
Well.
Jeremy, if I could just, if I could just jump in here, I, you know, I voiced similar concerns to Mark, you know, last, you know, two weeks ago. And we have a, we have a select board representative that comes to our meetings. I don't know. We don't have a planning board representative that goes to select board meetings. You know, technically, you're not a planning board member and not a representative of the planning board. You work for the town. And in a sense, you work for us, you work for the town manager, you work for everybody. And, you know, I voiced the concerns that this does feel a little bit like an end around because you say at this time, we're only just, you know. Getting a handle on these things or we're just. We're getting a number and all this stuff. And then as Mark pointed out, you've got numbers. Now, this will give you, this will give you more definite numbers. I understand that. And then it'll bring people, it'll bring people in. But but this is a planning issue. And we've made it clear that it's that it's our intent to do to do something. We want to be working on this issue. We do take it as as within our purview. And the. If you if you just, you know, if you're saying, well, we're just going to license right now, there's no inspections at this time, da, 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 da. But what's to stop from, you know, the next step is to just add to that ordinance that's under the police ordinance. It has nothing to do with the. Planning board going through and saying, now we're going to do a cap. Or now we're going to do, we're going to limit, or we're going to, we're going to require inspections, or we're going to do this, or we're going to do that. That's the issue I think that we have. And no one came to the planning board and said, hey. We'd love to hear what you guys have to say. No one came to the planning board and said, hey, this is what we're doing with the select board. We're running this ordinance through. And I hear you that it that it that it falls under the police ordinance just because of the way the Camden code. Is not properly codified, but I don't think that that's. An excuse to have two ships passing in the night.
Well. Ethan, I appreciate it. I'm kind of taken aback by the fact that you didn't know. I mean, I think I've mentioned that moving forward.
The only time you've ever mentioned it, Jeremy, is when we brought it up and asked you about it.
Yeah, it's not that I didn't know. I brought it up two weeks ago. I mean, yeah, I saw I saw it on the select board agenda. That's how I found out. So.
Brought it up. That's how we we were informed about it.
Right? And I think if you go back, I mean, I don't want to dwell dwell on this a whole lot tonight because it's not a not an agenda item.
No, it's a non agenda issue.
Because there are a lot of issues surrounding short term rentals.
Yes, there are.
Housing affordability, all stuff can play into this. And I certainly expect, and as I think I've mentioned in the past, that. Regardless if we move forward with a registration ordinance, this is a significant issue that's going to need to be dealt with likely in the planning board setting. That. Those two things can work together.
Well, why aren't they then? Why aren't they? Why?
Well, I will say that. You know, I mean, our agendas have been somewhat jammed up lately. Next, next or next week, when we meet in two weeks. Anita's already asked at the last meeting that we start talking about afford housing affordability and availability issues. As it relates to zoning. And certainly, short term rentals should be a part of that conversation. And that's going to continue. I don't see it going away and not being a planning board function. Some, again, some communities do this through licensing and registration. On their own, other communities do it through zoning ordinances. And I mean, just probably both of them.
Just to go off base a little bit there because you're talking about affordable housing. And and rentals. Well, explain.
Just rentals, everything.
All right, well, I'm talking about rentals right now. And and short term vacation rentals. Explain to me how a landlord. Or why a landlord would want to rent to a long term tenant. When the governor tells them they don't have to pay their rent and they cannot be evicted. When you can rent it for three times the amount of money to a vacation rental. All right, so it's not a simple issue.
It's not a simple issue, Mark. It is not a simple issue. But it is an issue that is impacting communities around the world. And. You know, it's something the town should look at. We're seeing. Camden's had traditionally had neighborhoods that have been dark in the summertime or in the wintertime because people have had second homes here. That's always true, but we're seeing people buying up homes just to rent them out. Vacation wise, and if if the town wants to decide that's the way they want it to go, that. That's the that's fine, but there has been lots of discussion and concern in town about the impact of short term rentals. And it's just.
I agree, Jeremy. I mean, short term rentals are having a negative impact on this town. All right, but to to handle it behind the scenes and do all these backdoor approaches is just inappropriate.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You think it's a backdoor approach. I think it's one. It's one thing is I I I mean that, Mark. I mean, it is one thing that one tool. On a path to trying to address an issue, and that's what we're trying to do. So.
So who drafted up the police ordinance? You did.
Yeah, modeled after the town of town of Bar Harbors.
Well.
And I told you guys I was working on this, right?
Only because it slipped out and we asked you about it, what was going on? It's when it's when a short term rental situation came up and you brought this up. And everybody's stunned. What? What are you talking about? That's when you brought it to our attention.
I think I'd like to say something here. The select board has gotten more letters, more comments about short term rental over the years and just about anything else I remember. We have been asked to do lots of things about it and we decided that one thing we needed to do is have more information. We're not licensing people, we're not asking people to do anything. We're looking for information and we're also looking for safety. We asked Jeremy to do it. The town manager is involved as well, and I think that's our prerogative. If you don't like it, that's okay, but we have the authority to do that and we did. And our meetings are public, they're they're broadcast, they are available online all the time. This is not a discussion that's come up quickly. This is something we've been discussing on and off for years. We finally decided it was something that needed to be done because it wasn't being handled anywhere else.
And I would like to just follow up again. I think it's a conversation that we're going to continue to have as the planning board as part of the housing issue. Yeah, if I can, I mean, the other thing, the other thing about this ordinance, Mark, is to. Like, this isn't the beginning of regulations of rentals. This is just. A start point that gets us to the place where planning board and others will continue to develop. More regulations or ordinances around this issue. This is not like. A done deal and it's it's one ordinance and done like we've, there's lots more work to do. So.
Yeah, I think I think what it comes down to, if I, I mean. Is is the feeling that there's almost two ships passing in the night where we've expressed as a planning board that we are interested in this issue. And then we come to find out that there's other, you know, other other. Packs being taken by 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 the select board. And I'm not saying that select board is doing anything improper. More it's it's and I think what I think to Mark's point, Jeremy, is that. If you wrote the ordinance and you know that we're interested in it, it seems like it just kind of came up. Behind the scenes and that, I mean, that's, that's, that's the fact to me. I mean, it just, it feels like it wasn't as forthright. As it could have been. And and I think that's when you know that that we've expressed a strong interest in in having something to do with this. And I think another appropriate, you know, the select board can say, Jeremy, go ahead and draft this ordinance, but they can also say. Planning board, we'd like to hear what you guys want to, what you guys think about this issue. That's another appropriate thing. And I do think it is a zoning issue. And so, you know, I understand that it can be regulated under the police ordinance and all these other things. But that's, I think, the thing that that's that's sticking with some of us is. That we have expressed an interest in doing something on this. We don't have all the time in the world. We're a volunteer board, just like the select board. We don't need every week. And we have only so much time. But it is something that we've indicated is a priority for us. And it does, as you indicated, fall under, you know, as well with the discussion with affordable housing. So I think the message has been delivered. I think that you understand that that's the way some of us feel. I'm not asking you to defend that, you know, I mean, we don't, we don't want to go back and forth on all of this. And so I think there's just a little bit of alarm from some of us. That there's action being taken on this that wasn't that wasn't brought before the the planning board. In a forthright manner. And I think that's the biggest issue.
I think another important issue to point out here is the fact that we are not an advisory committee. We are the planning board. We're a board that's that's capable to make decisions. And I think the select board needs to recognize that fact.
Understood. And maybe I'll just. End it maybe, and then we can move on. But I I hear what everyone's saying. When I've talked to the select about this, I have mentioned that the planning board is concerned about this and it's going to be look, working on this. I have mentioned that. And that's is what it is. So moving forward, let's start talking about it.
And let's. Yeah, and I think I think it just pays that we're all working together as opposed to. Working on separate on separate.
Packs. And you know, there's a lot of, there's a, you know, pretty significant movement now working on some housing issues in town. And in the mid coast, so I think it's a part of that. So.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if there's any other non agenda items. Call this discussion closed for now. Unless anybody else has anything they want to add on this issue. Including public comments. And we'll move on to any other non agenda items. All right, hearing none, I'm going to. Close that portion of the meeting then, and we will move on now to the site plan pre application meeting. Revision to an approved plan. Applicant is John Hanson. Representing Norman Medina. And Jeremy, I'll let you go ahead and give a summary here and then we'll go from there. And just want to stress that this is a pre application meeting.
Right. So in the this, in the site plan review section of the of the zoning ordinance. There's a provision that. For the most part.
I don't know if it's me or not, but you went into the tron, Jeremy.
All right, am I back?
I can hear you.
All right.
Fine.
Yeah, so.
Maybe it was me.
That encourages applicants to come to the planning board in a pre application meeting. I think four, three of you remember, may have remembered. John and came. Right about when COVID hit last year. For kind of a pre application meeting and we've got, you know, four new board members. And at the time, there were some stormwater concerns, drainage, at least questions. That came up. And the project is back on after. You know. Making its way through the COVID pandemic. So. John Hanson is an architect and he's here with Dr. Medina to explain the project and the project is. As indicates in the application that it is for the, in addition to expand the reception and waiting area by 287 square feet. And in addition of 1204 square feet for dental. Operatories and relocated space from the basement. And if you read the. The materials and John can get into it. There's a lot of ADA issues that Dr. Medina is facing and dealing with over there. So, John, I can hand it over to you. And I can share my screen. I have your site plan up and the photos of your site. And for new board members, again, this would be a site plan application eventually, probably right after this. Oftentimes, the board does ask to do site visits. And you may want to go down that road. I think that's where we were heading last time. And just do a walk around of the site and then and then they could. Move on with the project. So I will hand it over to you, John and Dr. Medina. And I'll share my screen. I'll probably find the site plan and just go from there. Does that sound good, John?
That sounds great. Thank you.
Yep. I'm going to try to find this, Matt.
Okay. Okay, well, as as Jeremy had referenced, the. The Dr. Medina has been considering trying to expand the office. For a considerable amount of time and. We have looked at the possibility of expanding into the basement. And we've looked at other areas that we could try to expand without increasing the footprint. But as Jeremy alluded, the the issue that we really run into is ADA. Which has many exemptions for elevators. If you, if you have something that is not a shopping center, not a municipal facility or not a medical facility. But since this is a medical facility, there's no exemption for an elevator. And so the only real option that makes economic sense. To increase the area of this office is by a continuing a one story addition. So the, you know, we've looked and again, the first thing, some of the members, Chris O was on the Board of Appeals, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and we did have to go to the Board of Appeals as the first step in the process. And and there were some questions that were that came up during that meeting. And and then as COVID hit, we were. Just about ready to submit an app. We did submit an application, I guess. And and then everything started falling apart. Dr. Medina wasn't sure if he really wanted to move ahead with the project. But in the meantime, we looked at the. Ordinance and looked at answering all of the items. And the drainage became a major issue with the increase in. Impervious area and. So the the real change that we did was to. Consult with Gartley and Dorsky on looking into a drainage line that actually runs on the. Southern edge of the property line. And we we've discovered in conversations with the town, with the Public Works Department, that there, there is in fact a drainage line there. And that. The town thought, the Public Works thought it would be a good idea for us to hook into it. And. So I had Bill Lane from Gartley and Dorsky pursue this and. Again, I've included the actual study, which in the end shows that after we increased the area for both parking and the building. We are reducing the amount of water that will flow off of the property. Onto any of the neighboring properties. And so I think that was, that was a major concern. To be able to show that we weren't going to have an adverse effect on any of the neighbors because of the drainage. So that's, that's the additional information that was not included last year. And and I think that was the the major stumbling block to. To meeting all of the standards the way I saw it. So we, you know, we, we do have elevations, which I did submit at this time, exterior elevations. Of the building to show that we are going to be working with the architecture of the building. And and it will be consistent with the current. Shape and details of the building and the building is not a very, very complex building. It was a single family residence. And but we're adding a little, a few more details to it to try to make it look a little bit better. And again, the addition. Is on either end of the building. One end towards Curtis Avenue was where the expanded waiting area would go. And at the opposite end is where the expanded operatory area and other facilities would go. And the parking lot basically just widens out a little bit in two directions, both to the east and to the south. And a few feet to the west. We've addressed the landscaping and screening. We have a plan that shows considerable additional planting. And we tried to identify the existing planting and in in. I feel that what we have there meets the requirement for screening and landscaping. So I think the the issue was to to again, explain what we're looking to do here and see if the board. Sees anything that that. We should have be sort of dealt with that that's not on on the plan at this point.
Does the board still want me to keep my screen being shared?
Not for me.
Understand what's happening here? Here's the entrance. Right, this would be the new. Shaded, this little hatch line here would be the new expanded parking. Area. What's nice about this parking is is they've got a hammerhead here, if you will. So and they don't have that right now. Cars that park here can back into here and leave. Here's the addition. Both additions. Want to stop sharing?
Yeah, I think it's okay.
All right.
All right, does anyone on the board have any questions of Jeremy or the applicant? Anita?
Thank you, Ethan. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
You hear me all right? Okay. Yeah, I did study this plan and it looks great. What a lot of work they've done to put put into to take care of that drainage and everything. It waited a lot of work they've done to put put into to take care of that drainage and everything. Uh my question relates to the parking. I noticed that um in the preparatory materials, it mentioned that the ordinance requires that for every one hundred and fifty square feet of space added, that they must add parking. What I wanted to ask Dr. Medina is whether the additional parking spaces, which I think are four, four spaces that you've had to add, whether that is something that you would like for the use of your business or whether you're doing that in order to fulfill code. And uh if you didn't have to, you wouldn't expand that paved area.
Oh, thank you. I it's a good question. In all fairness, I need those four parking lots. I would even take more if there was a way to get more.
Either I can just maybe chime in. I mean, I've been um doing this kind of work for a long time. And I I will say that oftentimes, medical um offices, parking standards, I have found um are are not adequate for um the use, um to be honest with you. So I can appreciate Dr. Medina saying he needs some more parking. Um yep.
It's it's times like this where I really miss Mr. Senders. My my drainage expert.
He would have. Well, I was uh pretty blown frankly. Uh I was pretty blown away by the extent of work that Gartley and Dorsky did in order to to evaluate the capacity of the drainage system um all the way down until it connects with whatever water it connects with the harbor or somewhere. I did notice that the uh pipe was full showed full or over full in a couple of areas down a bit lower um in that uh what was it, the twenty-five-year flood? Or some kind of flood situation. In any case, I don't have objections um. Um except generally, I I would wish to reduce coverage where possible of paved areas, which I think I think the town ordinances are kind of oriented that way anyway. So thank you for answering my question.
So.
Thank you, Anita.
I was seeing uh Gertling and Dorsky. On on their letter dated October twenty-first, page two referred refers to Ted or Tom Hedstrom on the Mount Batty Street project.
Oh, yeah, I see that. I'll have them correct that.
Correct that for the file.
I'll correct that. I correct that.
I assume that letter, the second page of that letter refers to this project.
Yeah, it's like it does, yeah.
The last sentence talks about Public Works um meeting. Yeah. It is. I'm sure that was just a uh.
A heading error.
Last time they had that project.
Yep, gotcha.
Yep. But John, can you make sure they address that?
Uh definitely, uh uh I will uh I'll get that corrected.
Yeah. So if no one has any other que- or need his hands.
Hold on, we got we got a few things. First, uh Mr. Siegel, do you have anything you wanted to ask?
Not so much asked, just make a statement that the improvement in the drawings and the plans that now include a connection to the sewer drainage and the new catch basin uh changed the nature of this proposal immensely uh in terms of what we saw before. So I just want to um thank the applicant for making those adjustments and having them reflected in the plans. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Matt. Chris O, how about you? Do you have anything?
Um just similar to what Matt, um as John said, I did, I was actually, I so I've seen these plans back when it was at ZBA over a year ago, when we were in person. Um and like, just like what Matt said, I mean, the the alterations to deal with drainage, but also the increase of plantings and other things. I mean, it's just it's just gotten better.
Thank you.
I think it looks great.
Hey, Jeremy.
All right, but Ethan, in the spirit of uh Mr. Senders, do you have the idea and Chris O, to your point, uh that some of the concerns we had earlier were in terms of drainage? Just so.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I followed that. Yeah.
Okay, just so for those.
Okay. And Anita, did I see your hand up?
Yes, I I think Pat had her hand, but.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, I'll go. Uh uh towards the end of the application, the issue of illumination is brought up. And um as a reference to the already, the previously lighted sign is still a lighted sign that's in front. I can't remember the exact terminology that was used. Um I just wanted to ask a question about that. Unfortunately, I I read this um today and didn't have a chance to uh check it out at night as I would tonight if we didn't have our meeting tonight. And um I wanted to mention generally that I have noticed, especially since LEDs have come into use, that oftentimes the lights that face a sign that is placed perpendicular to the road are situated in such a way on the on the ground where they actually are much more glaring than they used to be uh in driver's eyes. And I just wanted to bring that up as a general concern for um signs that are situated in that way and ask if um Dr. Medina um will be willing to look carefully at at uh how the lights that illuminate his sign might um shine in driver's eyes as they drive the road.
Yes, ma'am. We will.
Thank you.
Jeremy.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I take this opportunity to remind the members that they're not supposed to do any individual fact finding? Shouldn't be going by the site and checking it out. Everybody has to have all the same information.
Okay, just as well I didn't then. All right.
Good genie's had little angel on our shoulder.
That's why we do a site view.
Right, right. Thank you, Jeannie, for that reminder. Um and Pat, I know I know your um your vision's not what it what it always was, but are you are you doing okay?
Oh, yeah, thanks. Um this is just a small question I had on the um Public Works from Dave.
Yep.
Uh where he said, we may want to double-check the condition of the line on Vernon Street. Is that something that they've done or is it? I'm assuming it's all okay.
Um that's a good question. I I can um, John, you and I can probably um Public Works needs to sign off. They they kind of give their blessing when they get a they get a copy of this plan. So I will space with with Dave about it. And I'm sure if it hasn't been done, I'm sure it will be done. Um well, I'll make sure that happens.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Pat. Anything else?
Do you all feel like you would like us to do a site visit?
Yes, I feel, yes.
All right.
That sounds like enough enough interest that we should probably schedule a site visit.
Um and I think it's fine. We can do that as a as a workshop before um you guys submit. Does that sound good, Norman?
The sooner the better.
All right.
Will that include uh checking it at night? I don't want to do a site visit at night. I I'm not sure when Jeannie says that we need to not collect our own information. I don't know how we would take care of the issue I discussed about lighting.
Well, there's there's a performance standard on lighting in the zoning ordinance, so that is what they're required to meet. And and we can certainly um make sure sure John and Dr. Medina review that section. You can't have stray light off on the, I think it's um impacting the public way. So we can probably make sure we meet that ordinance uh requirement, Anita.
Thank you.
Anita, this might be a chance for you to ask for additional information, like a picture of the sign at night.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Jeannie. Um perhaps I could be submitted at the next opportunity.
And uh maybe you could do that prior um and have it available for the um walk around the the site.
We'll we'll take a good look at that and see what we can put together.
All right.
Thank you.
Um.
Thanks, guys.
All right, so when would you like to do this? Um it's up to you guys to schedule this thing.
John has to come from quite a ways away, I think. Um and before, we were gonna try to do it before the meeting. Like at four o'clock or something, so he wouldn't have to make an extra. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah. He'll have to be there for the sidewalk, but he doesn't have to be there for the meeting, so never mind.
Yeah. Yeah, um I mean, it would be nice to be able to um do a sidewalk. I I understand it might be nice to do it the same day of the meeting. But if, you know, it might be good um just for process to make sure this is efficient as possible. If something comes up at the site visit, they can try to address prior. And then they submit and then and then you don't have to maybe continue the meeting um necessarily to another meeting. Um I'm just trying to be as efficient as possible for the process um for the applicant.
Um if I could just throw out an idea, when you take photos, photos can be very misleading because I think I could show photos where that light doesn't even show up at all. And I can make it photos that that's all you see. Uh again, I'm very open to it if if the committee's okay with it. I don't mind people driving by and looking at it at night and giving me their input. I do think it's something very easy to address. We do have an electrician to put it up for us and.
Yeah.
But yeah, so please, you know, again, it's okay to me if you want to go take a look. But I the photos, I I don't mind taking photos, but I think they're just a little, they can be misleading.
That's fair. And I think we can all disclose. I mean, I I think some of you folks sat in on that planning board meeting um or the planning board um training. And I think it's okay as long as you all acknowledge what you've done. And if you're all doing the same thing and just do it on the same date, look or a different date, but acknowledge a date that you did. Let everyone know the date that you do a site visit or or just a drive-by to look specifically at the light issue. Um and with with, you know, Dr. Medina's um, you know, okay on on you doing that, I think we should be fine. So why don't, does that sound a better way to handle it? I mean, if you all just drive by at night, let us write down what day you did it and what you observed and then share that at the meeting.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Not at the site visit, but at the meeting.
Right. Yeah, I think that's fine. But but Jeannie's warning as well is well, well heard as well.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't help drive down Route One sometimes.
All right, let's look at a calendar here. Anything work next week?
I'm wide open next week.
I mean, the only issue that I have is that I'm leaving on Tuesday uh and I won't be back until the eighteenth.
Whoa.
Tuesday, next Tuesday?
Next next Tuesday uh on the sixth, and I won't be back until the eighteenth.
When are you leaving on the sixth? Late?
Uh actually, I'm I'm leaving.
Doesn't work.
No, the sixth doesn't work and the fifth doesn't work for me either.
What what's tomorrow look like?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I have time tomorrow.
Jeannie, can we do a a quick public notice of a planning board sidewalk tomorrow?
Can we do the sidewalk continuation of this meeting?
There, look at that. Job, Mark.
Ooh.
Yeah.
No motions to adjourn there, Ethan.
I think that the notice during a public meeting is considered sufficient, it's especially if we put a notice on the door and on the website.
Well, we'll just, we won't adjourn this meeting until tomorrow, too. We'll do that and we'll just, I think it's fine. We're good.
That's my favorite part is adjourning.
Yeah.
You get to do it in person tomorrow.
What time?
Does that make it a non-agenda? I I mean, it makes it something that's not on the agenda, so.
Well, it's part of the part of the discussion, right? I mean, we're doing a pre-application meeting and we're just going to continue the pre-application meeting on a sidewalk tomorrow.
Yeah.
Whatever you say, boss.
Best for me is um after nine thirty, so like nine forty-five or ten.
That works.
It's not because I'm sleeping. That's not because I'm sleeping in. It's because my I have to take my son to school, so.
I prefer prefer uh nine forty-five. I have a meeting at eleven. I imagine it would be pretty short.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna take long.
Nine forty-five tomorrow?
Can't do it.
Ten ten would probably work for me, too, with that uh that other meeting if it's not.
Matt Siegel can't do it.
Uh how about?
I can do anytime after that, uh before three o'clock.
I was gonna say, how about two o'clock?
I can do two.
Two o'clock? We saw.
Morning is better, but I can probably make it work.
How about um?
And no, can you do two o'clock?
Ethan, any chance to do early before you take the kids? Because you were right there.
Well, I mean, I'm right around the corner. I could. Yeah, I could. I could zip over it. Uh yeah, I would. I would need to be, I could. I could even walk my dogs to the dog to the to the sidewalk.
We've gone early before. Ethan, we did Lyman Morse quite early before network.
Yep, as long as as long as I'm as long as I'm back here by nine thirty. Um that's that's really my big issue. So if there's a if there's a time that work, what works best for you, Matt?
Uh eight AM? Can we do an eight AM like we did with Lyman Morse?
Eight AM uh tomorrow.
Eight thirty? I'm looking at it and Anita's like, no.
Anita, I don't know what's up.
I love freebie.
Eight thirty, Anita? How's that work for you?
Running away.
I'll cut. I'll come in my pajamas.
That's fine. We can we can have a pajama party. Mark, does that work for you?
It does.
Chris O?
Eight thirty is great.
Pat?
Yeah, that's good.
Great.
I don't think it's gonna work for um Andy because he works during the day, but I'm not positive. He can't make it eight thirty, but I'll see.
I can send him an email. Um I can send him.
Eddie, Eddie has an alternate. We have we have one alternate in the house already, so. It'd be great if he could come.
Right.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thanks, Jeannie. So eight thirty tomorrow.
Yep. We'll just continue this pup this pre-application meeting until then.
Okay, so I think we're ready to do that. Any other comments from the board members?
Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Norman, and and thank you uh for the for coming in. And uh I think we're we'll be seeing you tomorrow morning.
Okay, eight thirty. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys. We will not adjourn. We will continue this portion of the public meeting until tomorrow at eight thirty.
The only thing, the only thing you might want to do is to set a public hearing because you won't meet again on this subject. It'll delay. It can't be until the twenty-fifth anyway, so it would be a day out of your normal meeting time. Because John's gone until the eighteenth. Did they go away?
Yeah, they're gone.
Oh, shoot. Oh, well.
Um, yeah, I mean, we we'll just work within it, Jeannie. I mean, I think they're.
Why don't we just go ahead and set it?
Hold on, there they are.
Oh, good.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
A date for a public hearing?
Date for a public hearing for this, John and Norman.
It it anytime after the eighteenth is okay with me.
Was that lining up for the twenty-fifteen? Is that what you said?
Our meeting would be.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Well, normally our meeting would be the fifteenth.
Right, so that won't work.
Twenty-nice.
Twenty-second or twenty-ninth?
I mean, our our standard regular scheduled meeting are the first and third Thursdays.
Yeah.
Okay, that puts it off till the sixth of June. I mean, May.
We don't have a meeting on the twenty-ninth of April?
No.
No.
Okay.
Do you, Dr. Medina, normally we we do the first and third Thursdays of the month?
There you go. The sixth, the sixth of April works for me, if it works for John.
We're talking May, not April.
Oh, May, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. May sixth, May sixth works for me.
Okay.
I see Jason Stute here. I think he's uh probably your contractor.
That's correct.
Um, I haven't seen his name in a long time. Um is that your schedule? That that works with your schedule?
Yes, sir.
Should it be approved?
Of course it will be. You guys are great.
All right, well, that sounds good. So Jeremy, do you want to, Jeannie, can you go ahead and do that notice? And uh we're doing May sixth for the uh final hearing.
Yeah, we got plenty of time.
Public hearing?
Yep, yep.
Great. Thanks for bringing that up, Genie. You were absolutely right to bring that up. And now I can excuse the applicants. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Hey, Jason.
Thanks, Jason. So it looks like, Jeremy, we have some special guests as we move on to the next agenda items.
Sure, we sure do.
Uh, it looks like uh, we have Esperanza and Lauren here. You, you both got to see uh, town government at work, so welcome to the planning board meeting. And um, Jeremy, I guess I'll give you the floor real quick to do an introduction and what we're talking about here.
Sure, as um, as you know, we've been talking about um, how we're gonna try to amend the comp plan to um, address sea level rise and climate change. It's a big issue going on in town. Um, you know, everywhere really, um, obviously. Um, and Lauren Cafe is a Bowden College student um, who interned with um, with me last year during COVID. It was, you know, obviously a very strange time to do um, in being an intern. Um, but Lauren um, has really did a really lot, a lot of work on sea level rise and climate change. She's been working kind of in a cohort with Esperanza. Um, who's from the University of Maine Cooperative Extension, um, along with Bowden College. They've really done a lot of work. They're collaborating again on, on something else, hopefully um, that the town can take advantage of. Um, some grant, grant funding um, to work on this issue. Um, so Esperanza's here to, maybe she can explain a little bit about that, and then Lauren can jump into um, um, her propose, or her project, and she did a story map of sea level rise, and it's a, I think, really a good um, a good, good piece of work. So I really appreciate Lauren being here. Um, it was fantastic to work with her last year. Um, and hope to continue, and Esperanza is a local Camden resident. Um, and glad she's here to join us. So Esperanza, if you wanna maybe tell, tell everyone what you've been working on and some of the projects that we've kind of been working on together?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Jeremy. Um, yeah, I just wanna say that Lauren has um, she, she's working with Dr. Eileen Johnson, who's a social scientist and GIS expert um, at Bowden. And has done a lot of great work uh, in the past with us. Um, so I'd say that Lauren went from being uh, a very, a very adept at GIS mapping and the work that she's been doing to becoming uh, very accomplished. And um, she's been working in, on our project. Um, we have eight communities, or nine actually, around western Penobscot Bay. Uh, our project is called Collaborating Toward Climate Solutions, which was funded by the UMaine Mitchell Center for Sustainability and Main Sea Grant, and we have been working with these communities, bringing them together. Um, first interviewing them all uh, about needs and uh, regarding climate uh, impacts that, that people are experiencing. And so um, and then we did a workshop, bringing all the communities together. And now we're pursuing lots of other things, uh, you know, comp planning being one of them. Um, and uh, GIS mapping, geographic information system mapping to look at sea level rise and start to put in the new information that's come out of the main climate council work. Um, so um, I could go on and on uh, about the project. There, we have a great team of experts from the Climate Change Institute, as well as um, folks from DEP and so forth. And so we're continuing this work in these uh, nine communities uh, going forward, even if we don't get the grant. Uh, and we bring a lot of expertise to the table and um, and Lauren's a, a great example of that expertise that's been provided to these communities. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Esperanza. Wow, quite the, quite the compliment. Thank you. Uh, I'm also Camden resident. My mom, well, hello everyone, first of all. My mom owns the Belmont Inn and runs it, and this will be our third summer, so I've been lucky enough to be in Camden for at least a little while, and that's why my, my interests lie along the mid-coast. But yes, I would love to share my screen with you all, just to give you visual, a visual about what I've been working on with Esperanza and I. So Jeremy mentioned the story map, and a story map is an extremely interactive tool that can be used to display information in a story-like manner, in a way that's useful for planning especially, and also community engagement. And last semester, I worked on a project that looked at silver eyes in the town of Camden and the economic impact of that along the waterfront. And we, I looked specifically at community and resilience and, and what those two things mean together. And I think it provides an interesting way to look at the problems that the town is facing and how to find solutions for them. And so I'll just quickly show what a story map is. You can go through, and it has a lot of wording and pictures, and I'll show an interactive map in a moment. But essentially, a community is what, it can be a geographical location, but it can also be a social, cultural, economic, environmental attachment to a place. And so for Camden, a lot of the residents and visitors alike have an attachment to the waterfront, um, in whatever capacity that might be. And so when we're thinking about what Camden is and what resiliency is, resiliency is that ability to bounce back or bounce forward, sorry, during, after a storm or after an issue. And so to, and it keeps the integrity of the community. And so what we think Camden is will be preserved and, and perhaps improved after, let's say, a silverized storm, flooding, or any event for that matter. And to look at resilience in this way is encouraging because if we're looking at changes that the town might need to undergo, undergo, excuse me, to be able to withstand silver eyes, it's looking at Camden in a brighter light, in a way that we can improve the town in order to maintain the integrity of the town. And so I'll just scroll through. A lot of wording for the, for the semester project, but um, hopefully, this can be more of a tool that community can use and the planning board can use in the future once we adapt it. But in essence, what a story map can do is it can show this analysis that I did last semester, showing very sealed rise scenarios released by the Maine Climate Council and brought together by the Maine Geological Survey. And it looks at a closer look at the town, and if you swipe and swipe over, you can kind of see the impacts there and at the various scenarios. So as you can see already at highest annual, highest annual tide and at one point six foot sealable rise, there is significant impact on the waterfront. And moving forward from this, we'd be really interested in doing something with elevation. It's based off elevation, but to highlight that impact along the buildings is something that we're working on moving forward. Um, so I don't wanna take up too much time and go too much in depth, but like Esperanza said, he could talk forever about this. But essentially, what we determined from this analysis, and again, it can always be improved and the data can always be built upon is that a lot of increasing amounts of land will be lost um, through each silverized scenario. And so what the Maine Climate Council recommends, and this is from their main weight, main weight report from December of twenty nineteen, is that the uh, towns commit to manage for one point five of relative silverized by twenty fifty and prepare to man, prepare to manage for three feet of relative silverized by twenty fifty. And so keeping this community resilience in mind and what that means, how can the town improve upon Camden's infrastructure along the waterfront that really builds and creates community amongst residents and visitors in order to be resilient against these potential and really change that we're already seeing throughout the town with stormwater and flooding along Harbor Park. Um, so that's kind of, I'll stop sharing my screen. The work that I've been doing and hopefully will continue to be doing, you know, it's always, data's always being updated, and we're always getting feedback from community members. Jeremy has offered wonderful feedback and talked to Allison McKeller about potentially mapping the impervious surface cover of the town to look more closely at stormwater. So that's a whole nother, whole nother segment, but it's very exciting. It's um, it's very exciting work, and because there's a lot that we can do, we have time to do it. And just to make Camden a, a better place, but also, you know, keeping it what it is as well. Thank you.
Lauren, could you maybe um, just go back to your screen and, and focus on the um, the actual, the map and the aerial? I just think it's um, if you could zoom in, I think it's just, you know, pretty um, kinda shows what, what's going on uh, potentially and where the town should really, not just the town, I mean, there's a lot of this, most of this is private property. And you all can see Bayview, how Bayview is gonna be impacted there. Um, I don't know if people know, the condos on Bayview, I think some, we did a, a, a um, site visit many couple of years ago now, but um, and Mark probably knows the name and others, um, there's the, the wharf that was there that is now parking underneath um.
Blood's like crazy.
Um, really stunning to see when we have high tide, what it looks like at that condo um, complex there with, with the tide and the level of the sea there. Um, but I just think it's a really uh, interesting and informative map.
Um, right, that, that was the Lock Marine property.
Yes, yeah. Um, and then you can also go over and see, um, Sherman's bike over there.
Yeah.
Pretty significant. Um, and so as we move forward, I think this is, you know, one of the tools that we, we should start using to, when we start talking about, again, we gotta do a comp plan amendment, but when we start looking at, um, you know, what we include in the comp plan and what recommendations we make and um, you know, we talked about trying to do a comp plan amendment along with some zoning ordinances to address some of this stuff um, all at the same time, um, if we can. Um, you know, it's, and it came up on height, um, you know, at the Lyman Morse project, so uh, you can obviously see how that's gonna be impacted over time. Um, so again, this is a, a good planning tool as we start to address co, uh, sea lower rise and climate change in our comp plan.
So, so about that, um, with the Lyman Morse project, they, they did raise their elevation there a little bit, so does this map reflect that raised elevation, or is this the old elevation?
Um, I mean, I, so.
Question, I think.
Right, what year was that elevation done for Lemon Morris?
Well, they're raising it now.
It hasn't happened yet.
They're raising it now, so this would not take that into account because this data is from the previous year, the silverized scenarios in the map. I'm not, if it's not, hasn't happened yet, it wouldn't.
They're raising the level of their floor. Right, they're raising that level, Mark.
Well, they're raising the level of the docks too, and I.
Somewhat, yeah.
Seawall was part of that rise also, so.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not hugely significant.
No, it wasn't.
Because of the limits of height and everything else, they couldn't go as high as they might.
Right. Um,
One thing that Jeremy and I talked about addressing and, and the way to visualize this map better is it, it looks like the water overtops buildings at this point. I could, you know, and obviously that, that wouldn't be the case. And so there's data available that can provide elevations of buildings and, and find where the water will hit the elevation of those buildings. And so once there's, and that can be used, again, like Jeremy mentioned, for planning. And so once that, the elevation of, of Lemon Morises is finished, there can be another analysis, an updated map completed on that. That's why I mentioned earlier, data is always being updated. And so it's, it's especially for running a comp plan, it's always good to be up to date, and this is the most up to date that we have at the moment.
Anyone have any thoughts, questions, or anything on this, or questions of, of Lauren? I do think um, assessing the impervious surface is a pretty significant issue that the town should look at. I mean, you know, people in certain neighborhoods really, really struggle with. Um, and we don't have any, any um, limits other than limits on, you know, for the most part, building coverage. Um, and we all, obviously have limits on ground coverage, things like impervious in the shoreline zone. But if you're in neighborhoods like Matt's, um, and Ethan's where drainage is not great, um, we allow people to build out one hundred, for the most part, one hundred percent of their lot with, with impervious pavement if they want, or, or, you know, pavement or patios and decks, and that always, that just pushes water off um, onto someone else. And it's a pretty significant impact in certain neighborhoods that I think the town not only neighbors deal with, but our, our public stormwater system deals with, and it's, it's a big issue. Um, so again, I think working with Lauren to look at um, mapping some kind of neighborhoods, impervious surfaces and come up with you know, what, what is a good recommended um, standard or maximum um, that the watershed can handle um, is important. You know, it's just something else that a lot of communities regulate those kinds of things for a good reason. I don't know if the town ever wants to go down that road, but um, certainly, you know, impervious surface is, you know, Anita brought it up, asking about um, the parking lot for Dr. Medina. We don't wanna pave everything. Um, and it'd be good to get water to um, you know, filter, filter down through the, the soils and, and get into conveyances. Um, especially as, as quickly as possible, not as quickly as possible, which is, you know, to actually mitigate impacts on neighbors and our storm system, so. I'm, I'm worried on that.
One step further, Jeremy. I mean,
Yeah.
If that's such an important issue, why, why would we look at village extension and try to uh, increase the pervious per uh, in, reduce the lot size and increase? You know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, it's a, it's.
I'm not sure what you're saying, so maybe.
I know what he's saying. I know what he's saying.
It's a trade-off.
Saying if you, if you split lots up, you get more building, more impervious. I mean, I. It's, it's a, it's an issue. I mean, there was a, a housing forum that I took part in the other day. Um, you know, where, you know, trying to encourage communities to look at zoning and allowing more dwelling units in town. Um, the more you do that, you know, that, that impacts stormwater. Um, so, you know, there's, it's a balancing act, no doubt about it, Mark.
Um, But Jeremy, you were there at the select board, last select one with Dave, was talking about, you know, there's certain technology, he was talking about asphalt that absorbs. I mean, all of these, there's some fascinating technology out there, and I see Lauren's nodding. That can offset, again, it's a balancing act, you know, yeah, we want more housing, and yes, we want affordable housing, and yes, we're gonna be putting up those platforms. But again, finding the technology um, also within budgetary considerations. That will allow us to um, not fall victim. Um, as this is a very real situation, you know, how can technology help us? And Jeremy, do you remember Dave, you know, talking about as being the beta test for this?
Yeah, and I've um, I'm been working on this stuff for a, a long time, when I was doing watershed work and, and up and, where we did a lot of, um, we had a fee or stormwater fee, not a permit fee, but a stormwater fee that property owners paid. Um, and you could lower your stormwater fee um, by implementing, you know, estimate practices, rain gardens. Um, impervious.
Be part of it. It's like efficiency made, giving you, you know, if you insulate your house, we'll give you a, it's gotta be part of the long-term plan.
Can, can I build a wall, Jeremy?
A wall?
I just wanna build a wall.
Where?
Around my property.
You're gonna need a moat there. So just ask Lauren about moat.
No, I just, I do, I do wanna say thank you, Lauren. Really, this is uh, very, very helpful. It's a stark uh, reminder and, and um, very sobering. Um, uh, it's, it's, it's um, it's really, it's, it's more, it's, I had looked at some of this stuff similar to this before uh, we had the Lyman Morse application, and I did raise the issue with them. Um, and I, 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 I still feel like we, we put the cart before the horse on that one. Um, but, but it's, it's uh, it's, they, they needed to get building and you know, at the time Rosie was the, was the architect on our board, and she said, you know, buildings only last fifty years anyway, so. I, I don't look, I don't, I don't look at buildings that way personally. I, you know, I live in a house, you know, over a hundred years old and um, so um, but, but this is really, um, yeah, it's very sobering. And um, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and I'm not sure uh, exactly how we address these things. I mean, obviously the impervious services and things like that, but um, wow, yeah. So I don't have any specific questions, but thank you for the, for doing this work. That's, that's really helpful.
I, I think it's so important to get this information out there, because if I was a property owner and I really wasn't aware, I mean, how can they not be aware? But when you look. I mean, how can they not be aware, but when you look at this map and you own those properties on Bayview? You know, I'd be really, I'd be concerned about my real estate and my property, I mean, look at the yacht club.
I'd be willing to offer twenty five cents on a dollar right now.
You'll make your money, you'll make your money in the next twenty years, right? Hey, okay, Anita, see your hands up.
Yeah, and this door.
Thank you, this is a fantastic tool, it's it's certainly the first step that we need for planning in Camden. I'm very actually appreciative that Camden relatively speaking, being a coastal town doesn't have as much vulnerability as I'm sure many do up and down our coasts. Nevertheless, there are definitely some high value properties that will be impacted. I'm just curious, I I know this is the sort of basic information we need to start with, but I'm curious about whether that is going to inform ordinances or zoning going forward, especially say along Bayview. Whether we're just gonna knock on doors and say, hey, you guys, did you know this place is gonna flood out, or, I mean, I'm just wondering. I, you know, really out of curiosity, because obviously you can't predict now what type of work on, say, the planning boards part might be undertaken with this information.
Yeah, that's a good point, Anita, I mean, from my perspective, this is gonna be kind of a a, you know, an appendix that's part of the comp plan, and it's gonna try to guide some you know, regulation on height, we need to change height requirements in certain zones. Yes, people may unfortunately lose a view. But in order for those businesses in the harbor to stay and Camden to stay what it is, and what we know of Camden, I mean, we have to build a resilient. You know, our our infrastructure needs to be resilient, it's not public infrastructure, it's it's private property. And so if we can, when people are gonna undertake projects and we can say, yeah, you can go up another five feet in height and make the make those changes in the ordinance because of that. You know, those are good things, and those are ordinances that we should try to move forward, and I think this is the beginning of that process. Again, gonna be included, I think, in the comp plan, we should include all this information in the comp plan and then make some recommendations for some zoning ordinance amendments.
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree.
I'm good, thanks, Ethan.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So on on the sort of more short term, but planning board related topic related to this, I think is the is how and when the town is going to move forward with regard to planning for the renovation updating of the town landing, so what I want to ask is whether the information that we have now based on this study, does that give us what we need in order to move forward with the town landing, or is there another other information that you can give the public to to kind of understand how this interrelates with planning for town landing changes and and improvements?
Lauren, can you zoom in there a little bit and just focus on the landing for a moment?
Yes. And this just has the zone. This is the Harbor Business District, so is that good enough right there? Should I go a little closer?
And then maybe go to the, can you go to beyond the one point six and sea level rise?
Do you want to go three point nine or six point one?
Yeah, we're done at six point
Life on the edge, life on the edge.
Hopefully only Lauren will be alive at that point, so.
Well, do I want to be alive at that point? Of course, of course.
See, seeing all the boats, I'm just reminded that, you know, rising tide lifts all lifts all boats, so we'll just be a floating community.
Questions, Lauren, do you have in terms of the way this is designed? And you were talking about elevations, and do you have time in terms of frequency and regularity of these increases? Or is this what we're looking at? Again, you have an orange slab there.
Like a times timeline of when this might occur, predictions?
And also is this? Okay, so I guess if this were, again, so I would start with that first question, yes, is there a timeline first? And then would be the regular height, this is not changing tides, this would be the new established.
This is sea level.
So this is, yeah, so I'll give, actually, I was what I was gonna say earlier, just a background of the data, and I'm gonna read from the Maine Geological Survey, so I don't I don't mess it mess it up. So this data is based off of inundations, so flooding from several several scenarios of silver eyes in combination with storm surge along the coast on top of the highest astronomical tide, so in this case it is the worst case scenario, so highest astronomical tide is an approximation of the amount of land that will be inundated during the highest predicted tide for a given year. And so it's incredibly useful for towns to use for silver rise planning, because it offers a visual of the worst case flooding scenario. And with in terms of climate change in the broader scope of it, those events are going to be more frequent. You're going to have those those hundred year storms are going to not be a hundred year storms anymore, they're going to be increasing in frequency. And so the data was developed with a bathtub inundation, so like what, you know, it's it's the water's flat. And it uses topographic data as a base elevation, so it takes into account the elevation along along the coast. And then adds that storm surge, you know, one point six, well, that's one point two, one point six, three point nine, six point one, eight point eight, ten point nine. That that started that initial elevation along the coastline. And so that was a is a splurge, I remember talking to Pete Slavinsky last summer, and he was explaining this to me, and it's taken me months to understand, but that is essentially what it's based on is the estimation for the highest tide of the year. And then adding when it's the water, it's not like waves, right, it's just flat water, and then you add the the scenarios on top of that. That makes sense, and then the timelines, the Maine Climate Council has this great visual from their Maine won't wait report. And this offers a timeline for the different scenarios. And so the base, what we're really looking at and what the council is is recommending is focusing on twenty fifty mark for planning purposes, and so that's what I mentioned earlier briefly. That they recommend a commit to manage for one point five feet, and I know I mentioned one point six. Because that's the data that we have, we have data for these scenarios, we don't have it for one point five, but that might be me in the works later in the year, Esperanza might might know more about the the actual data than I do, but and that is the intermediate scenario, and that's really what we're looking at. And but if you want to say, if we continue with the on the track that we're going with emissions and how, you know, globally and and in the state and nationally. We could be looking at intermediate high scenario or higher scenario, and so that's why the council wants the state to prepare to manage for that three feet and that eight point eight, which is the high scenario. So committing to managing for that, but then preparing that it could be worse if we if we don't reduce emissions.
Yeah, well said, Lauren, very well said, yeah, it's a commitment versus prepare preparation, which is the the key wording there based on the scenarios and the timeline, so also I just want to say that the Maine Maine won't wait is the climate action plan that we deliver to the legislature on December first, twenty twenty. And now the legislature is taking up all of these recommendations and strategies that we've developed. I was lucky to be on one of the working groups throughout this last year. And and it doesn't end there, we will be revising the report every four years, and there are a lot of bills that are being submitted for consideration on a lot of these, you know, coastal hazard issues, including sea level rise, so stay tuned for more information, but good job, Lauren.
Yeah, thank you, thank you both, can I can I throw this out to both of you, and Esperanza, I'll start with you. What would you suggest is the single most important thing that we can do from a planning board perspective? You know, to to address this issue, aside from just obviously awareness?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Jeremy knows this better than I do, but I would just say that I think what towns are doing right now is assessment work. And I think that probably Camden has done some of that, however, I think that you know, starting to look at prioritizing implementation, that's gonna be sort of the big step and the most difficult, because all of these things cost a ton of money. And there are some funding sources, this is something that we want to do with the project that we're working on with our team is to actually bring those experts to these communities in workshop fashion to start to to deal with just what you're asking, what's next, how do we do this, how do we go for funding, what's the best avenue for steps that are needed, and also providing the resources that apply to the communities that can be used, so I don't have any good answers, I just say that we have a process in place to try to get at some of this.
Thank you, and same same question, Lauren.
Yeah. I think going off of that, one of the most important things would be to a community engagement, like you said, you know, awareness of the issue, and I I think also just staying up to date on the data and and what's out there, and also what are what are people living in the town seeing, I think that's extremely valuable, and I want a resident seeing every day with stormwater or with the tides coming over, you know, into Harbor Park and and those issues, I think that sometimes and this is what the research Esperanza mentioned that we're doing is is really talking to people who are who are in these communities and and what they're seeing, because that can be And so I think that that was really important, and roping, you know, student, we're excited to do to do this work, students especially, I'm trying to get some of my peers peers in on this to offer just data backed solutions. And along with community engagement, I think not everyone is on board with the fact that this is even happening or could happen, right? And and so how could we use, like I said, story maps or really interactive ways for people to to notice what's happening around them and then add data to that as well, and say, oh, wait, this is what I'm observing is actually, you know, scientifically happening or predicted to happen. And also staying extremely positive, I I I think, like I said earlier, the resiliency aspect is exciting, because it's it's a way to to work with members of the community to really assess what Camden is and what we want it to be, so.
Right, that's great, Lauren, and I would add to that, that, yes, I mean, since we have governance the way that we do in these small towns it's really essential to provide that educational experience, if you will, for the community members, because they're voters, and for example, Vinyl Haven and Belfast are starting to do some citizen science work, which I've done a lot of in the past, and trying to look at what what might be best for for these Western Penrith Bay communities. Like a a project like it's called My Coast or Picture Post, and what it's doing is is doing exactly what Lauren's saying is getting out there and locations that are targeted for taking photos during, you know, before and and during storms, where safe. But for people to start recording and looking at that and and becoming more aware of these issues, because when you live in a in a house that, you know, you're not really down on the harbor and you don't see what's going on, it's really critical to start educating the community. And I think that this tool is great, and I think we should do some workshops, you know, with the community members to show this work.
What I'd like to do is I'd like to take this map and at least this story map and be able to maybe post it on the town's website, Lauren? Is that doable?
Yes, I we had a conversation about partial data, but that's that's information that's out there, and so as long as you're comfortable with that. It's good.
Yeah, I think
Also, if we could, we could get, you know, Susan Mustafa, you know, to to put a picture in the paper to get my wake some people up as well. Do people still read newspapers? I know I do.
I do.
Well, you know what I find concerning about this stuff is is when you promote worst case scenarios, you know, it creates like an alarmist interpretation, and what I would like to see is what would, what is the most reasonable scenario?
Well, you know, it there is the most reasonable scenario, that's the one that's the lowest, the
The one point six, right?
One point six, and that's what we need to absolutely plan for.
Between one point six and eight point eight.
Yes, we're we're really not considering eight point eight at this point, you know, it's it's really you know, one point six to three point nine, and you know, you need to understand that it's very possible to have three point nine. But we're committing to planning and committing to to doing something about the one point six, because that no matter what we do now, that's what we're gonna have.
You understand what I'm saying, okay, with all this information you're presenting? If if you made that apparent, like, you know, the
Worst case scenario?
Well, the one, I can't read that, what is it, one point, one point?
Six.
Three point nine is what we're predicting. Not, I mean, you've got eight point eights on top, and it's the red line, and that's what, that's what you know, people that maybe don't sit down and really study this is what they'd look at, and they look at that and say, oh, that's not possible, so they just ignore the whole study.
Yeah, so do you think that it it just needs to be more clearly defined, or?
Yeah.
Also, it's it it takes time to start, a lot of what we're gonna have to be doing is having the conversations to I mean, this is a huge education campaign, and I was curious when you're talking about the islands and things, I mean, what I think that, you know what options are there for us as a community to work with other communities in their planning as well, and should be, because to Mark's point, like, I mean, this, the education piece of this is because other, you know, the other side of this is people look at and go, well, twenty ninety, two thousand ninety, that's a so like, that's a, what do I care?
Right, no.
So the community, the region wide planning component of this is gonna be enormous.
And that's exactly what we're about with our C T C S project and going forward. And we got letters of support from all these communities for this project. And all of them say they want to work in this network, because that's where they find find value and support to to working with each other, so that's that's actually starting to happen. And that's what we want to build upon, so you're exactly right, I totally agree with you.
Right, right, for example, I'm doing a very similar project with Islesborough and mapping their silver rise. And they're working on choosing, and that was another thing, choosing a scenario to plan for, and I I think, like you said, twenty ninety seems a heck of a long way away, but when you think of the time it takes to get funding, to go through processes to then build twenty fifty, twenty ninety is is very close. In in that grand scheme of things, and so emphasizing, I think, you know, so the great thing about Story Map is that it's very editable. And that's why I love gaining feedback is we can include that if you think it's important for community engage, what is the thing that we want Camden citizens to understand, you know, timelines and and the focus of the three point nine. And the planning board, along with the community, really has to think about what do we want, you know, the state recommends that we commit to commit to plan or plan for the one point six, but does Camden want to do that, or does Camden want to go above and plan for three point nine? For that intermediate or intermediate high scenario, depending on the risk involved, do you want to take that risk with the waterfront? And assume that it's one point six, or, you know, give a cushion, something else, there's a lot of questions involved, and so I think going back to that kind of next steps, is they really thinking what do what does Camden want to plan for? And then and then really diving into that and and creating a plan off of that.
Right, and I thank you, thank you, Lauren, for that, I'm typically very optimistic, but in this situation, I find myself very committed to more of the three point nine realm and
very committed to more of the 3.9 realm and, you know, 1.6 is important um, to commit to, but I think we should be planning for 3.9. And I don't think that's a, a big stretch that we're going to hit that.
Well, well, and the, the other thing is that 1.9 is, is our flat comm sea level.
Is that 1.6 you mean?
The 1.6 is our, is flat comm sea level, where we're already seeing higher than that several times a year with storm, with high tides and storm surges. So you take 1.9, 1.6 and add at least another two feet multiple times a month. Like that's when the, the park is flooding, the landing is going to flood. To Anita's question about the landing, the, the condos, like all of those things, like three feet is not very high.
Right.
And we're already there to a certain extent.
Good, good discussion. Um, really good discussion. Um, and just touching on Anita's point, and I think Lauren kind of laid it out from my perspective as, you know, being in municipal government, you know, going again, getting to Anita's question about the landing. Um, Anita, we had um, TY Lynn did a, you know, a thing on the landing and, you know, a concept.
Right.
Plan. Sea level rise wasn't taken into account at all in that. Um, that said, it was open space. It was, you know, parking and green space. Um, which, you know, if you're going to have development in that area, let it be that, that stuff that really doesn't matter. Um, but you know, when we talk about redeveloping our waterfront or, you know, re, rebuilding it and the dock system and, and everything else. You know what, like Lauren said, if you look at, you know, where it's 2021 right now. And, you know, when, when, when Chris O said, or someone, someone said, you know, 2090, 75 years, I'm, I'm thinking I have a three-year-old downstairs right now and she's going to see that, you know? Um, and so, I mean, that's impactful. And so when we talk about spending and working on, you know, municipal infrastructure such as our waterfront and dock system. I mean, Anita, when, I don't know when the last, from the town, like, when did we rebuild the waterfront and the pier system and the dock system? The boardwalk there, you know, one was last, that never happens, right? I mean, these things happen every 50 to 90 years, probably, that communities actually change what happens and, and redevelop their waterfront. I mean, so when we do it, I mean, certainly the town's got a plan for this big time. Um, because we can't spend millions of dollars redoing our waterfront. Um, when will we do that again? Um, you know, that's going to be 50, 60, 70 years from now, probably, right? Um, so we've got to really plan for, you know, a significant rise. Um, and you know, what's important, I think, and, and I think moving forward and ways to handle this. Um, you know, the town is, we are going to be looking at redoing our, our downtown TIF um, that we have, Tax and Increment Financing District, which includes a lot of these areas. And if you look at the Lyman Morris proposal, um, that they, they presented to the select board recently about redoing the, um, the downtown TIF, um, and credit enhancement agreements. You also see, if you look at that proposal, you also see that Bayview Management mentioned some projects that they would be interested in doing because of sea level rise. Um, and so it's kind of, all of these things are kind of, you know, need to be moving forward and working at the same time. And, you know, that TIF funding can go to these things and that's, and, and that's what we're kind of looking at. And so I think it's, it's really important that we look and work with our, our adjacent property owners on the wall, on the landing. Because are we going to build our waterfront, our, our rebuild our public landing 3.9 feet taller, higher than um, you know, Peter Otz? Um, no, if we're going to do that, we need to get Peter Otz on board or the owners of, you know, Bayview Management on board to, to work with us and, and, and do their project too. So I think, um, you know, it's, it's going to take, it's a, it's a lot of collaboration. There's going to be a lot of public-private partnerships that need to, need to happen, um, and need to play out if we're going to, if we're going to be successful at planning for the future and planning for Camden's future long-term. And again, 2090 may seem like far out for us. Um, it's not far out for my daughter. So, go ahead. Anita.
Anita.
I, I thought I might have heard um, that the town landing planning was basically pocketed because we needed to get a handle on our future with regard to sea level rise. That makes sense. But I thought that there was also the element that you just mentioned about um, the other property owners that are at the level of the town landing that would need to go along with this too. So I, I'm just confused about um, how we all plan together and how that takes place.
Well, I think this, from my perspective, this is like the first step right here. No.
So another, another question that I have is, it has to do with um, so the properties on Bayview are the most severely impacted. Um, I sort of feel like the, uh, across the harbor, being a marina, um, there, maybe they'll plan, you know, they're all one property owner for one thing and they can, they can make their plans as they need to. Um, so as our problem of sea level rise proceeds through the years, the, the property owners on Bayview will be impacted. They'll need to make plans. I expect there will be, as you mentioned, a TIF. I expect there to be other government um, aid coming forward, grants applied for and given, and a lot of aid given to um, Bayview property owners in order to help become resilient to this issue. Meanwhile, they are being taxed at a very high level. Um, because they're in such a pretty area. And um, I'm just sort of trying to wrap my mind around the financial implications of, of aid and taxation and all these different things that, that um, that actually are complicated, kind of need to be teased apart and sorted out.
Yeah, Anita, I, I mean, I appreciate that. It is a very complicated issue and there are many different facets to it. Clearly, the, the taxation issue is not a planning issue. And so we need to focus on those. I mean, with, within, I mean, it's really easy to get, get drawn afield and start going on to other, other issues. But what we need to focus on is what we can do as a planning board to benefit the town of Camden. And so that's, that's really where, where our focus has to be. There are other groups and other uh, boards and committees and everything else that need to focus on those issues. And, um, but you know, I know, I know that Jeremy did raise the TIFs and those things. But in general, we need to focus on, you know, what we can do to, as a planning board to put Camden in a better spot going forward. Mark, I saw your hand go up.
I, I did. And Lauren, maybe you can straighten me out on this. I'm confused. On, on these, on this map here, when, when it's 1.6 sea level rise, is that worst case scenario?
So, okay, does this refer back to earlier when I was mentioning highest, um, the highest annual tide or highest approximate tide?
Right.
And that's how that's the worst, that's the worst case scenario, right? And so maybe Esperanza can elaborate on this. Um, highest astronomical tide is the correct term and, and as to why the Maine Geological Survey used that. And I think it, it's the best, they used it as the best planning. Uh, they brought it about and they, they added the 1.6 and different silverized scenarios to that to emphasize that. Um, actually Esperanza, can you take over for this one?
Yeah.
Where I'm, I always get stuck and I don't want to say anything wrong.
So there's different scenarios of, 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 you know, what we're going to be emitting into, you know, the carbon dioxide that we're going to be having. And so.
Right. But no, my, my, my question is, well, numbers here.
I'll try to get there.
I think you should answer it, Mark.
3.9.
Yes.
Are they, are they the worst case scenarios for flat water?
Um, yes. I mean, so there's the different scenarios, right? And so you can see that the 1.6 is where we would be if we had that scenario. And the 3.9 is the next one. And then it goes in from there, the very, very worst case, right? So yes, it's about flat water, but it's also tied to the scenarios. So 1.6 is very reasonable if we're going to be doing something about climate change. And that's what we really need to prepare for. I don't know if I'm not answering it, so.
What?
Nah.
May, may I ask?
Go ahead, Jeannie. I'll let you, I'll get back to you, Mark, okay? Jeannie, jump in.
The river. Um, it doesn't show any impact on the river rising. And we've got public buildings down there. I, I wonder if it does and it's just not shown or if they're knowing.
Jeannie, I'm actually going to table your question because I want to allow Mark to finish his discussion. Um, I, I, I think, I think what Mark is, what Mark is asking is not, not the difference between the 1.6 to the 8.9, you know, AKA worst case scenarios. I think what he's trying to drive at is we have flat water, astronomical high tide, you know, the worst astronomical or highest astronomical tide. And then we're, are we, are we accommodating or accounting for a storm surge from there? Or are we, or is that the worst case scenario, just that number? I think if I'm, Mark, is that right? Is that, am I getting it a little closer?
That's what I'm trying to find out, yes.
Right, right. I, I know it's complicated and it's hard for us, you know, who are not skilled in these things as well. Uh, Esperanza, can you address that or, or?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I'm pretty sure that that includes storm surge as it's known. Um, but it's variable as well. I, if that makes sense.
Right.
So one, one of the things we want to do is we want to get Pete Slevinsky here. Who is.
Jeremy's throwing his name around a few times, so we're definitely going to have him here.
And so we're, he's on board to do a workshop. So I invite you all to be a part of that. And I'm sorry, this, this is not my expertise and it's not Lauren's either, but we're learning alongside. And these are actually brand new numbers as of December. Um, so we're, you know, we're all kind of learning as we go. But great question, great discussion.
What, what I'm, what I'm trying to portray here is that this really needs to be relatable. And it's, I mean, it's great to put pictures up and put numbers up, but we need to know what it really means.
Right.
And you know, if, if you're talking about 3.9 as a, as a flat level sea rise and then you've got a storage, storm surge on top of that, that's, that, there's a huge.
Massive.
And that is what the scenarios are representing based off the Maine Geological Survey. Yes.
Is this, is a 3.9 with a storm surge?
Yeah. So on their, on their website where the data came from, it, it says that the, takes the highest astronomical tide and then adds the storm surge slash silverized scenario. So initial, initial starting elevation. So that is, but as, again, taking your point, that's really something that's important to tease out. Um, and it can be included in the story map. And then after a workshop with Pete. And that's because that's question two we're going to ask is what does this actually look like? And so that is the definition of it, but I think a visual would also be very extremely helpful. I mean, this is.
Yeah. And Lauren, I'm trying to just dug it down for my own self as a layperson, but um, what we're talking about astronomical high tide is definitely something that we will hit. And then storm surge would have to hit on that astronomical high tide for that to actually hit a higher level. Is that right?
I believe so.
So I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And again, maybe that's, that's another question. That, I mean, that, that's just my, what I'm trying to figure out. It would, it would sort of, the timing would have to work out to be bad for everybody. But, but it, it's realistic that that will happen in the next, you know, over the course of years.
Right, right. And I will get that specifically for you, um, from Pete.
Great.
And I, I did, you know, I did mention, you know, Pete Slevinsky and I, I really want to get him here to do a, a presentation, at least that we can record it. Um, and we can have it available for people to listen to. Pete is an expert in the state of Maine on, on issue. Um, he's, he's advised a lot of communities in Southern Maine on their plans.
Yeah.
Um, so.
So also, just to add.
I have a, a concept for you that, that might be helpful if you wanted to do this. If you took and said, okay, we're, we're, we think 3.9 is the most reasonable scenario. Now, if you were able to do a map like this for uh, the 3.9 flat water and then the 3.9 storm surge, you know, that would give.
Even more, yeah.
Us, it would, it would dumb it down for us so we could really.
I hear what you're saying. And you could have almost a shaded area, like, you know, whatever to show the difference between the two.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's a great suggestion. I also would point out, and I can send it to you. Um, Pete just did this kind of presentation for Casco Bay, uh, for Friends of Casco Bay. And um, I can send that to you. It's a really a nice, uh, short, very succinct kind of presentation on this. And I don't know if it's going to get at your uh, specific questions uh, about the waterfront here, but I can also ask him the questions that you've come up with, so.
There's also another report that I'm thinking of that Pete did. Is it Booth Bay? Or um, that he, that he explained?
York.
Is it York?
I think. You found that for me.
Yeah, I did. And it's awesome. And I think you're like, we need to know for Camden. And I will send that, that presentation along and, and how they, it, it goes more in depth than storm surge.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Mark, he explains it very well in, in very simple terms. I, I've seen one of his presentations and it, it's, it's remarkable, kind of all, it all, once you listen to him, it all kind of makes sense um, on how it happens and why.
And I can also pass on, I think South Portland, he's done a really great job with too. And um, they have a story map on this as well. So I can pass that along. It's very, uh, very well done. And so we'll have to look at that, Lauren, to see if that's going to give us more information for Camden.
Good stuff.
Yep. Yeah, this is great. This is fantastic. Um, all good questions. I want to give everybody on the board one final opportunity to ask any specific questions. I think that we're ready. I saw Jeremy's mug was empty about a half an hour ago. So I think we're, we're about ready to close this meeting down. But um, if anybody on the board has any specific questions, I want to give you one further opportunity. Hey, Chris, I see you up.
Yeah, uh, well, I was just going to say, if, if we could get a copy of this report for ourselves to, because I think some of the questions that we're asking is just that there's so much information here. Um, that if we could have access to this, the whole report, not just the images and even on the website or something, I think would be really great.
Lauren, I'd love to be able to put this up on our website as soon as, soon as you're able.
Yeah, I can, it can go live if you see it's fit right now and then it will stay live. But I can adjust and make changes and add things over time. So it can be kind of a living, a living story map if, if you're comfortable with, with the data that they're.
Yeah.
That's great.
I'm also. Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing, um, that I'll also send you the section of the, the Science and Technical, Tech, Science and Technical Subcommittee Report, which is, you know, very uh, in-depth with this. And you know, Pete, we had a lot to do with that as well as some other scientists. So that's going to be another really good resource for you.
Great. Thank you. And Pat, how about you? Do you have any further questions?
Um, yeah, I did. As far as um, the research that we're doing, Jeremy, for this. Um, I know there's been a lot of good information that we've gotten from you folks uh, that I've been looking at. Um, are we at this point just to keep researching things, jotting down questions or points that we have as far as getting towards our end goal?
End goal. Yeah, that's a good, good question. I mean, um, I've been trying to, I've been thinking about how best to, to kind of manage this and move this forward. Um, you know, I wonder if there should be like a little subgroup of the planning board kind of, kind of taking the lead and at least just kind of trying to, to put some of this, a little package of this together. Um, you know, I, I'm just trying to, it's hard for us to do this every other week, right?
Yeah.
Get far every other week. Um, you are a public board. Um, and so, you know, I think if we could have, you know, three people or two people kind of working on, on some stuff in the background um, and moving these forward. And I can, I can work with, with that little couple, two or three people um, as kind of a planning board sub, subgroup that's working on sea level rise and comp plan. Um, I think that's probably the best way to do it. And maybe we can, if you guys are comfortable with that, um, I can, you know, if you guys are comfortable with that, um, I can, you know, kind of schedule sometimes to, some time to meet with you all or a couple of you to kind of focus on this a little, like, just dive down into it. Um, it's really hard to do that in this kind of setting, I think.
Yeah. And, and Jeremy, if I could just throw out a, a, a recommendation. Um, because like, you know, Pat and then, um, Andy and everybody was sort of sending emails around. I find the email really clunky. And I mean, I know, I know that that's, I mean, even for an old man, I still, you know, that, that was one of my go-to, but you know, like a, a Slack board or something like that might be a lot more conducive to, um, to regular discussion. I know that Pat threw out OneDrive as far as, um, something to organize and share. I, I know that my work offered OneDrive and it kept popping up on my computers. I just killed it and just couldn't, couldn't be bothered with it. But I don't, I'm, I'm sure I could figure it out. Um, and I have used Google Docs, but I find that Slack can be um, very good for sort of more contemporaneous, like in, like, you know, um, you know, just sort of discussion, um, where we don't necessarily need to close out every member of the planning board because you're gonna, you, you'll see all of a sudden that there's a new message on Slack and somebody's posting something new or something like that. I think it might be a way to, to, to encourage involvement from everybody, but those who want to be involved will, will clearly be involved. Um, and that, that's important, I think, too. Um, so, uh, we can, we can hash these out, but I, I am open to suggestions for um, ways to facilitate the planning board, making action or, 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 or doing work on the, the, the awareness and the, the education side of things uh, without making every other week the, the focus of that. I think that's really important. I think it needs to be much more dynamic and proactive than that.
Um, Ethan, is Slack like Microsoft Teams?
I don't know. I use Teams for work as well and I hate it because it always pops up on my computer and then I'm like trying to kill it, kill it, kill it. But Slack is sort of, um, uh, um, it's, it's a, it's a, I don't know how to describe it. It's just a more of a messaging board, um, where, where people, you know, you're just, it's pretty, pretty rapid um, typing. It, it doesn't take over your computer. It's web hosted. Um, you know, uh, I have, I, I have, I have my biases against Microsoft because I've been forced into the, to the, using their, using their applications for years and years through my work. And it's just like, every time I turn on my computer, it's opening up Teams again. I'm like, I didn't ask for that. And I, I clicked the button that says, do not open it, start, and it still does it. It's like, it, it's just, it's, it's a, but that's, that's a personal gripe. I'm sorry.
Does Slack have document storage also?
Uh, yeah, that's another question. And it may be, I know that you can definitely post documents on it. Um, I'm going to defer to my IT expert, uh, Matt Siegel to, to give me some more input on that. Or whether he could do some research for us on that. But now he's going to start shaking his head, yes. Is this, does this conflict with his Google commitments? Before, yeah, Esperanza's leaving. Esperanza, thank you so much for, for coming in and for your, um, expertise and guidance. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. I just consider myself a linker. And, um, so I, I appreciate the.
Esperanza, can I ask you a question really quick?
Yes.
Can you, um, do you think you can help, um, our little subgroup of our planning board work on some of this stuff? Do you have that in you or is part of your work or?
Oh, yeah. I'm sure. I mean, I'm happy to, you know, to provide that, provide anything that I can. Um, like I said, I'm not an expert, but I, I know where these things reside. So.
No, but you're a great facilitator.
Oh, well, thank you. Yeah, I do, I do a lot of that.
That's great. That, that, I would.
I'll rope you in, Esperanza.
Uh, okay. All right. Great. I didn't know I was going to get more work from this.
That's your home. None of us, none of us plan on it.
Well, I love working in my own backyard. So thanks a lot. And.
All right.
Be well.
Be well.
Enjoy your dinner.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, um, there was a document that came up, Municipal Planning Assistance Program, Planning for Climate Variability from the Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry. So this is a document that was passed along to us that I would highly suggest everyone take a look at. But keeping in mind that, uh, my first breakdown of this created 75 distinct items to address in terms of climate variability and things for us to address.
That was your first brush?
That was the first brush. Well, but again, this is not a joking matter. I mean, what we're going to run into is the breadth and depth and the complexity of this particular topic. And so what's hugely important is to organize and prioritize and then structure into a Slack or into a documents. Uh, at this point, there are so many tangents and, and, and you know, diversions and into the weeds that we could go. Um, it's going to be really important to come up with basically our hit list.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree. And that was to Jeannie's point a couple, a few weeks back. And, and, um, you know, I do think that we should be focusing on, I don't know if the right number is, is somewhere between three and 10 things that we can really focus on. Um, and, and that is, that is really important, you know, for us right now to, to get to that point. And, and I'm shocked and not surprised, Matt, that you came up with 75 items.
Yes, very Matt Siegel. But here, but here's, uh, what Lauren and was so lovely to bring in is that I think what we can do is also, uh, create compartments. So it's not quite so daunting. I mean, and, and looking at the comp plan, Jeremy, what also starts to make sense is not only compartments, but to prioritize and figure out, okay, what are we really going to address realistically within each of these ones? And if, looking at the comp plan, you're going to pick certain chapters. You're going to, in this case with Lauren here, it's clear that we're going to address the harbor. And that we may, Ethan, to the point that we may have four or five that are harbor oriented, maybe even five or six, that that might be our priority in terms of how we address, um, our chapter in the comp plan. But that needs to take place, this kind of, again, this idea of the list and the priorities and the, and the compartments um, before you start to delve into Slack. Um, because it'll just become a madhouse of information.
I see what you're saying. That, that's a really good point. And I, I totally, I totally get that because you're right. There's no, that could just go anywhere. And we could find well beyond 75 things to talk about on Slack.
Well, you get, you get quickly lost in the weeds. And we, we're dealing this, as you know, with the, the broadband, you know, we're building a, a structure to create this regional utility, uh, for the whole mid-coast, again, the mid-coast internet project. Um, and it's quite similar in the sense, uh, Ethan, that we have so many factors involved. And how do we organize and how, how do we prioritize them?
Yeah. You know what I'm really good at, Matt, is delegating. So here, here's my suggestion. Um, Pat jumped in early on and said she was willing to help with the, with the, with the organization and the, and the, and the structure. And you have this expertise and, and also the experience with the other project. Can I ask that you two sort of head our subcommittee? Not, not so much as like taking on more than just helping us organize the structure at the beginning?
You have no idea what my day is like, Ethan. Try building a regional utility with three people. No, I've got nothing. I think you're awesome.
How about you as special consultant to Pat as she works to organize?
Absolutely.
Is that one for you? Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to tap into expertise here. And, and I think that's the one thing that we need to, we need to focus on. Who's, who is better? My expertise is in delegating. But, but, but what we really need are people who are, you know, working, have, have the gumption and also the, the expertise to do this. And, and Pat, I really appreciate your willing to throw your hat in the ring. And I think that Matt, with, with maybe acting as a special consultant to Pat to help her out.
We're being recorded. I can, I can go on the record.
He's saying so much no. Uh, we do need to wrap this meeting up. Chris, did you have something you wanted to jump in with?
No. I, I saw what you just did to Matt. I'm keeping.
Hey, uh, but nice folks. I, before we wrap, uh, no motion to adjourn, just to remind everyone, because we're having such a good time here that we will in fact see each other tomorrow morning. So I, Jeremy, uh, Jared and I have been a bit guilty once in a while of, oops, I need the text because I forgot that we all said we're going to meet up tomorrow morning at 8:30. So just want to again.
Right.
You radar.
I had a note to make the same.
That's why we can be friends, Chris.
I'll help you noodle this stuff a little bit, okay? I'll reach out to you separately offline and, and we can, um, we can.
There's certainly, um, you know, Ethan, we shouldn't joke around. There are certainly people, it doesn't necessarily, you know, having someone from this board lead that is essential. But as you were talking to Esperanza and other people, there are some wonderful people, I think, who could, uh, participate in this.
Absolutely. I don't, I don't think it has to be limited necessarily to the planning board. But we do need to have, we do need to have a planning board arm of it.
You just had one fantastic volunteer with double thumbs up. One's the Belmont Inn, which does flood. I, I have, you guys are right behind us.
Definitely expecting the, the.
All right. Nice folks.
All right.
I will be, I will be of service in any way.
I will. I, I'm going to rope Lauren into this a little bit and Pat, and I'll, um, I'll try to, I'll try to at least, um, get some progress moving forward on this.
Yeah, Lauren, Lauren, thanks again.
Then we'll slack off later, Ethan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Um, anybody else have anything that they absolutely have to get off their chest before we close this one down without?
I do, I do.
Oh geez, here we go. I tried to get away from Mark. Here we go, Mark. You got it.
Uh, MMA has a lodging and housing.
Yes, I'm going. Would you like to go, Mark?
Three-part webinar series, yes.
All right. I'll sign you up. I think today may have been the last day, but I'll, I'll, I'll dig into it. I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Okay. I think, uh, anybody else want to join?
I would, I would, uh, participate in that. If, if Jeremy, if it's an option to get us in, I would also be interested.
Yeah, I, I will look into that tomorrow. They're after 8:30. I'll do that.
Here, here's what it consists of. Understanding the short-term rental industry is the first one. Second one is regulating vacation rentals. Third one is the middle-class housing crunch.
And then the fourth one is how climate change will affect all that.
No, we're talking about housing.
Oh, Jesus.
Yeah. And are they making those available also as recordings? I think they are.
I don't think so.
Hmm.
Um, I know, um, yeah, so I'm signed up for all three of those. I've been to, um, Kristen Collins, an attorney to the regulating short-term rentals. I've, I've, I've listened to her spiel a few times. So, Mark, I'll reach out to you tomorrow if that's still a go and we can sign you up. I'll do that. Matt, I'll sign you up too.
Oh, yeah. I'd be interested also, Jeremy.
Okay. Anita.
The team, the team is interested.
Okay, sounds good. I'll let you know tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is somebody bringing donuts? What's, what do we got?
Someone remind me tomorrow morning that I have to do that for you all tomorrow?
That you need to show up at 8:30 or something else?
No, that I'm doing this for.
You up after the meeting.
Right.
Gotcha.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. So I guess that's it. We're going to close down the meeting and not adjourn. And, uh, we'll continue tomorrow at 8:30 because we can't get enough.
And again, thanks, Lauren.
We need to continue this meeting tomorrow at 8:30.
Yeah.
Second.
I just hit the Tron.
We all voted, Ethan.
Well, that's good. Everybody said yay. We're all set. That's unanimous. We'll see you tomorrow at 8:30. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Thanks, Lauren.
Lauren, thanks so much.
Thank you.